In the item is one list, we have a city branding. And several councilors were asked to put this first, discuss our new logo. And clearly, none of us saw the landslide coming with the logo. I know I had no idea the implications of the shorting out for the explanation board until it hits social media. We need to correct this, as we certainly want a logo that we and our citizens will be proud of, and one that will take our city into the future. We have a contract with Tatum. Now personally, we'd like the mayor to ask them for additional logo goals, which to choose. There is not a time limit on this. We do not have to be in a rush. We just want to get it right. And without going ahead and opening it up, anybody has any ideas or...
Mr. President, I would like to start and say that Tatum Design is a reputable company. They have a history of doing outstanding work. I think if you go look at it, you'll see, you know, several awards they've done. But personally, and I've made this very clear in the emails I've sent to the council, that I do not have a problem with Tatum Design and their work. My artistic knowledge is very limited, even if I have any at all. So it's never been about the logo for me, but it's been about the process that got us to here. And I would like to recommend to the council that we stop our obligations with Tatum for future work, such as the website. I know the train's left a station as far as money goes with this logo. But in light of what I've learned in the last few days, as to the lack of knowledge, or the lack of knowing that we were even doing this by our local companies, we need to give them a chance to get involved in this. So my recommendation is that we terminate our future business with Tatum Designs and see what's out there for the local companies to get involved in. Not only the local companies, but the University of North Alabama as well.
Thank you. Tom Anderson.
President Jordan, I have one. My comment is that in regards to all the logo that we got with backlash, again, I apologize for all of that. We certainly want to see to be able to get behind something that everyone can be proud of. I too ask that we pause this, perhaps terminate with Tatum, and start this process all over again. And I do ask with my comments that we ask for a refund, or perhaps a partial refund to cover their expenses, what they've already done. And let's just start this all over again.
You know, I'm... Well, I just want to say, as a member of this council, when we saw the design, never in my wildest dreams did I think of the logo being something that was an exclusive that was called back from this council. That was not even thought. Who ever thought of that? Of course, when you mention it, everybody jumps on the wagon and tries to make the most out of it for something that's not nice. Yeah, I was disappointed in other people who even think of that. But it's out there. So I think we need to move on from that. But every time anybody sees it, that is what they want to think. I think Tatum is a very reputable company. They've done designs for a lot of different cities, and from big cities to small cities, to large companies to small companies. They had a lot of experience, and they had several different designs that we chose from. And what we chose, we thought was a good idea. Obviously, many people don't like it, and that's okay. I mean, we all have our opinions. And today, I think we need to look at this again. We, you know, we've done work with, they've done work with us, they've done a lot of research. I'm not for just going a different direction with a different company. But I think that they have other ideas also. But I would like to see the way else they can come. I mean, they're a very reputable company. They've got to have a lot of different ideas, and we just picked the wrong one, I guess. But I'd like to see us at least give another shot, just because they're already there, they've already done work for us, they know how we are. And I am not saying that we don't have talent in this city or in North Alabama, in Lauderdale County at all. And I would look at what people here also can, ideas they have too. You know, we just, we just need to kind of slow down a little bit, look at this, and make sure we get this thing right. Obviously, we missed our, missed ground. But as I always say, what mistakes we make today, we can correct tomorrow, and this is one we need to correct. And we want to do something that we're all proud of, something that we can take pride in. And obviously, the flow is something that we gain. But I'm not for just throwing Tatum under the bus. I think we need to at least see what they can do for us.
And I will add that we need to give our local people an opportunity to participate in the process of trying to prove that they can do the job. They were basically, you know, left out in the cold, and not even given the opportunity. There are several didn't even know we were doing this rebranding process. So, you know, that was a mistake that was made, and we need to give our local people a chance to at least come forward and see what they can offer. When we sit here at Christmas and we say shop local, buy local, within a few months later, we take our tax dollars out of the city of Florence, it don't sit well with me. And I based my decision on that, on what information I had at the time. And I was under the impression that nobody was interested in doing it, and nobody responded to an RFP. And since, I've learned that none of that's true.
My question is, if we're almost shopping locally, then we need to order stuff off Amazon. I don't know. I don't. I mean, you said FedEx, going all of those down the street.
You do. I can't control what the public does, but I think I can have a say in what we do.
Mr. President, this process didn't last two weeks. It lasted months, six months or a little longer. And their company traveled to us, and they sat down and asked us, what do you think? What does Florence mean to you? And it certainly didn't come out F-U. That's not what it came out. And then they did a survey and listened to what the people had to say. And then our council traveled to Birmingham, and we sat down and offered us four choices. In the beginning of the meeting, he said, please rate your four choices. And I went first, and I said, I'm sorry, but I have two ones, a three, and a four. Because I like all of them, but two of them, I couldn't really pick between. And so the process was not one logo, take it or leave it. And we, as a group, heard a backstory to each one. And there was a backstory with each logo. Never in my wildest dreams would I have ever seen F-U. That's just not a part of my vocabulary. But apparently, it was seen seven, eight thousand times at least. But at this point, we had four logos presented to us. And after listening to the voice of the people, I recommend that we take those four logos. My wife says three, you already know they don't like one. And I say, no, four, because the newspaper's survey said 2.9% of the people liked it. We don't want to stop them from having a voice too. And let's do a survey where we let the residents of Florence vote on one of these four logos. Now, Mr. Oliver has a pertinent point, but we've already gotten on the ship and sailed where we're going. So I don't see any point in throwing Tatum out on this one. And we're not to the point yet of opening up about our website. But I'd like to see the whole city have the opportunity to vote on one of the four, because we all liked more than one, all six or seven of us. And so I'd love to see us do that. Give the people their voice, and let's bury the bottom three, which I think I know what number four is going to be, and let's move on. It was a group decision.
It was a group decision. So perhaps the others, I disagree with your, with your saying, Councilman. But we can disagree and don't rely on any of this. But however, the other three that has not been presented, show them to the public, show them to the public, and get their input and see what they say. I saw them all. I still stand by mine to move on to get other logos.
Do you say get them from other people, or let Tatum offer some more?
I prefer to move on, but if we're going to remain with Tatum, if the council votes in majority ways, to, you know, to stay with them, start from scratch and look at different logos.
Okay.
If we remain with Tatum.
Is it true that we've only invested less than half of the $25,000, which we're, we build at $10,000?
$10,000, Mr. Denny.
So we've only spent $10,000?
So do we still owe 15?
Thank you. We have nothing to worry about.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we just...
Yeah, I know. I was going to say. We got one right there. We got one right there.
Terminate the contract for Tatum.
I would vote to terminate, but the council votes to keep them, then I would like to start processing with all the different, whatever it's worth.
So are we going to, are we going to vote whether we remain or go? Because all I did was, you know, I mean, I just, I'm recommending that we terminate and give local firms an opportunity to at least have a shot in earning our business and designing a logo. But do we, does that, can we vote on that, or is it...
No, we're to terminate the contract. I'm not, I'm not going to take this down. No, we're to terminate the contract. We have a resolution supported by a majority of the council.
So is that something that we could introduce tonight? Or, Billy's, is Billy...
Yeah.
Is that something, Billy, we could put on the table tonight?
You can. You can try to add it to the agenda. You can make a motion to add a resolution to the agenda, and then you have to get a majority vote to add it to the agenda. Otherwise, you can put it on at the next meeting.
Well, I'd like to make a motion tonight that we add it to the agenda and vote on this tonight and move forward. However, the council decides. I mean, I think you pretty much know where I stand, and, you know, we get this done and over with, and then we move on, however, you know, the council chooses to do it. I just, I think it's important enough we put it on the agenda tonight.
I can support that, too. I just, I would like for us to at least reveal whatever we choose to the public before we mark it as 100% disease. That doesn't necessarily mean they vote for it, which my proposal was, we let them vote on the four that we already have. But I'm the sole voice here, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, but that, but those...
Don't just comment on that. I'm not making another proposal. I can live with that.
Those logos are Tatum's. Those logos are Tatum's.
I think the one that we have is...
And those four.
I don't know about the other four. I'm not certain about that.
That will, that will not be a problem.
What, getting the other logos?
We only want one of them. We're going to give another three back.
I hear a motion, then, that we do a resolution adding that to the terminating Tatum's contract.
That's my motion.
A motion, Mr. Oliver. Second, by the way, some of the...
Discussion. This is all contracts? Or this is any future business with Tatum, including the website?
I would like to terminate and then seek out local business, local firms that can do the same business and keep the business local.
Advertise it locally.
Advertise it local, send out packets, whatever we got to do to let people know what we want in a rebrand, and give them an opportunity that they've never got.
So we will pay Tatum what we owe them, and that's the last thing we have to do with them on these two projects?
I don't even know what we owe.
I don't, I don't either.
Mayor said we were, had been on the invoice for the $10,000.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm uncomfortable voting on a resolution that I have to see before me, and that we cannot read and study as we have been able to do previously.
You have to slow down a little bit, get a little bit...
That's why I was asking those questions, because it's, it's very wide open. And I know what you mean, but if we don't write it...
Well, that's what we're letting Billy do before we meet. He's going to write it.
Write it between now and five o'clock.
Yes.
I agree with the council, and you guys, I think we should slow down. Say it for a moment.
Well, I can tell you this, I've been doing this for 14 months, and I know two or three different times, this very thing has happened with other topics and other situations where our city attorney has gone to the back and written a resolution, and we've come out and had to read through it and vote on it. So I don't want this to be any different.
All of those are motion. All of those.
I abstain.
So that ties, ties a tree to one of them.
So just a point of clarity. There, if you want to cancel both contracts, it's going to be two separate resolutions.
You're right, because there were two resolutions to begin with.
There are two contracts. So it's going to be one for the branding contract, and one for the website.
Exactly.
So is that what, is that what y'all hold to prepare?
I do.
Yeah, they'll go ahead and do it, too. And then you'll, we'll, then those, at the regular meeting.
Right, okay. Mr. Jordan, can we clarify, once that comes to the, to the agenda, how political part of the meeting, is that right?
It'll be like a regular revolution, yeah. If you give him my time, it'll be like a revolution.
Explain what you said one more time.
It'd be like a regular revolution.
So we won't vote on it tonight, we'll vote in two weeks.
No, we will vote on it tonight, and somebody in this council can ask for, no, for immediate consideration, and then it gets put off for two more weeks.
Thank you. So that gives us time to look at it?
Let's see. Any other discussion on this? No.
A couple things on the agenda tonight. The first one is a contract with WW Williams to fix an automatic transmission in an garbage truck, $23,000. So we have a contract on that. The second item is the seeking permission to apply for the annual AAM recycling grant. This is a privilege, and the only funding we're requesting is 25% of one item in there. That's an E current. That will replace a person on the line. This is sort of an amendment from the recycle stream. It will replace a person on the recycle line, and therefore, pretty good idea. We're proposing to match 25% of that. The rest of the items, we've got recycled dumpsters, education outreach, we have an in-kind match there, since we do that anyway. Cardboard trailers, enclosed trailers for killing in Lauderdale County. The total is 238,501. We're requesting 196,251. We're proposing to match 37,250, to be our part of it if approved. Now, if it is approved by AAM, we'll come back in the fall and budgeting process, and you'd have the right to approve it then, too. All we want now is just permission to apply for it. Any questions?
Mr. Coates, we've received this grant a number of times. Can you please remind the group what we've done previously?
Yes, we have pretty much built our recycle center, including the automatic parts that we have in it. We've got, we apply for a grant every year. We don't always get it, we don't always get all of it, but we've added the fiber screen, the sorting belts, the upstairs, the downstairs, and it's really helped us a bunch. AAM has been very good to us, very supportive of our program.
You have a question?
Thank you.
Here.
I have one item on the consent agenda. It's item E. It's a resolution to approve payment from CNH Engineers, cooling the heating for emergency replacement of the hot water actuator valve in this building on the second floor, of It's being paid for my budget in building maintenance funds.
Any discussion? Thank you. This next item, law, the front of it has to be a total program law.
I've got one item on the consent agenda. It's item G. This is another one of our capital improvement projects that we've already had a funding approved before, and it's improvements to the Cypress Creek Water Treatment Plant. We received two bids. One bid was $11,699,500, and the other was $7,796,700 for the H. Crow construction, and just recommended the award of this contract to the H. Crow construction.
Mike, do you have a timeframe on construction?
No, not yet.
Good afternoon. I have two items on the consent agenda. Item H is a resolution to approve the North American Symmetrical Solution Agreement. This is the ITron, our meter reading agreement that was actually approved in November. They sent an online agreement that has to be approved online, and it's subject pages of this regular agreement to information. So this has to come back through for us to be able to move forward with that. Item H is our TV PPA training for our customer service representatives. We started this in 2019. Of course, we haven't been able to follow up on any training to extend, so this is
Good afternoon. We've got three items on there. The first one is an invoice for power clean equipment for a pressure washing trailer in the amount of $2,203, to be paid out of budgeted funds. The next one is Park and Record received $75,000 from a Nashville and Testament of Ann Austin. So this is a resolution submitting the mayor to sign to receive that money.
Bill, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem.
Divert is, of course, in District Four, and so I would love to be a participant in those discussions about how those improvements will be made, because as you well know, that park is used so heavily.
Yes.
And I know we have the foundation that helps guide and direct what we do in that park.
Right.
So it would be great to help communicate to others what this will look like.
Sure.
It's a wonderful deal for Ms. Austin and her estate.
Absolutely. I talked to Mr. Killa, who is over the foundation, and we'll get together in the next couple of weeks, and I'd love for you to come, and we'll discuss it. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I assume that'll be possible, if that allows you to do that.
I guess I'll have to talk to, yes, I'm sure that will be, so we can use the foundation.
And I'll be saying very well, went church with, went church with us, and her family's listening in or get word, we just are so appreciative of this.
Absolutely. It's amazing, 100%. If you'd like us, I'd be happy to invite you to the meeting.
Thank you.
And item L is to approval of payment to Hobart for the cleaning of our ice machines in the amount of $1,927.96.
You have a question?
Thank you.
We have a contract for entering into contract with Mid-South Paying Initiative Paying Program. The bid price was $2,436,000.
Any other question?
Just as a reminder, Bill, we allocate 2.5 million annually for paying. When will you release the streets that are going to be paid with this bid?
Well, I mean, he's, you know, usually it takes six to eight weeks at minimum, you know, once they find out the contract and approve, because they've got a lot of work to do, they're ready for it. Now, as you know, we're right now in the middle of giving the paving program. And the reasons, the council meetings, I'm not on the Public Works Committee, but it worked out this way, was that last year's paving program got stretched out to the end of the year. And I talked to the Public Works Committee, and we kind of wanted to get it back on track to where we're getting near the front of the year, and, because it seems like the cities that do it here in front of the year don't have as many delays. And so that's kind of the purpose of it, you know. But anyway, you know, this is the Mid-South Paying, and I anticipate with weather delays, you know, February is usually a pretty bad month, you know, we're thinking, you know, with a little bit of fortune in our favor, we can, you know, we could get it going by April or December.
So what, what percentage of the land is still like from last year?
We're over 50%. That's about all I can tell you. And every, and every day that they got good weather, they're, they're out there putting.
You have a discussion? Thank you, Bill. Any... Will that when he gets back? We'll, 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 we'll. We have an application here for a member of the dedication board of Joy Park Baker, this loading garage, District Six, and we do have an opening. Of course, she is a member of the garden club. We don't have any other applications, so we're here to motion to approve. Somebody, second, a second, we'll make a motion to go ahead and point our dedication board. But all in favor? That's all we have right now, so we have a few minutes. We'll resume.